According. All right. So good evening, everyone, and welcome to the zoning ward of appeals meeting of August 23rd. Due to the public health and safety concerns associated with the COVID-19 pandemic, the board is meeting via video conferencing using the Zoom platform in accordance with the governor's executive orders. There is no in-person public participation tonight, actually mostly because town hall is being used as a polling place. Rather, the public can watch the live meeting through Zoom online and on cable. Notice of tonight's meeting was published as required and posted on the town website. The web notice included instructions for members of the public to access the meeting and participate in any public hearings. For each of the public hearing applications on this agenda this evening, the public comments will be taken at the appropriate time after the board has asked any questions. Please note that tonight's meeting is being recorded and a transcript will be available at a later date. We start our meeting with some administrative issues. And there will be a number of public hearings which will be on applications that the board has already reviewed and now wants to hear from the neighbors. As we recognize, you know, these areas better than we do. I will introduce each agenda item, so everyone will know which item we are working on. Finally, we will get to the reviews, which are generally the first time we are reviewing the applications or our applications where the applicant needed to get this board additional information. There will be no public comment on any of these reviews this evening. Neighbors will be noticed on the applications at the appropriate time for some future meeting. If you wish to comment on an application that has a public hearing when we get to that item on the agenda and I ask for public comment, please do the following depending on whether you're on the phone or online. Members of the public attending via the Zoom app may use the raised hand feature at the appropriate time. If you wish would like to make a comment, the feature is located at the bottom of the screen. Those attending via telephone can press star nine. The meeting host will see that your hand is raised or that you have pressed our nine and will unmute those waiting one at a time so that you can speak. In either case, please state your name when you are called upon to speak. Just in order to keep the meeting orderly and ensure we get a clear recording, we ask that you follow these ground rules. One, when you are given access to speak, please state your name and address. It's helpful for the board members to know if you are a neighbor to an application. Two board members, I will call on you one at a time to speak to avoid everyone speaking at once. If you wish to speak at any time when I am not calling on you, you may also use the raise hand function or literally just raise your hand and I'll see you on the screen. Three board members, please mute yourselves when you're not speaking. This is especially important if you're not the only one at home, or if you have animals that might bark. Four, we will use roll call voting for purposes of all board motions. This will ensure that the record is clear. So thank you in advance to everyone for your patience. Please bear with us as we conduct our meeting this way. Remember that we have lots of papers in front of us as we're trying to get through each of these applications and through our computer. So again, just bear with us. So thank you for that. And with that said, I'm going to ask for, let's start the meeting with a roll call. So Jim, if you don't mind.
James Meyer.
Aziz Essen.
Rocco.
Rocco Limetone.
And our new board member.
Alberto Paratori.
Thank you. And Norma Drummond. So I do want to welcome Alberto to the board. Somebody actually listened when I commented a couple of meetings ago that the town board was looking for members for our board. We did have one member resign and we still have an alternate seat that is open. So again, if anybody is interested in joining all the funding we have on this board. You know, please send your resume or your with a cover letter, whatever to the town board, to the town supervisor and you know, they, they would happily consider you for their app for our. You know, the delegate position here. So, all right. So we do have a full agenda before us. We do have our upcoming meetings are going to be Tuesday, September 27th and Tuesday, October 25th. It's kind of scary that I'm already talking about October, but. We do have, oh, I forgot the pledge of allegiance. So I'm going to ask everybody to stand and say the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Michael. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. All right, we do have one set of minutes to approve the minutes from June 28th. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended? Remember, these were circulated before what would have been our July meeting.
So these are the June meetings you said, or the July?
We did not have a July meeting. We didn't have a quorum. So these are the June.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So I'm taking motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Nice.
Okay, I'm all in favor. Just raise your hand for this one. That's fine.
Hi.
All right. Thank you. All right. So the way the for the general public, the way the meeting runs is again, we'll have public hearings first. I'll introduce each item. The board will ask any final questions that they may have, and then we'll open it up for public comments. So. Item number one tonight, appeal 4039 Courtney Shatino, Courtney Shatino, 13 Wright Boulevard, Hopewell Junction is requesting a 16 foot sideline variance to allow a 24 foot by 34, 30 foot or a 1490 square foot attached garage with an addition above and a 13 foot sideline variance for a 20, sorry, for a 12 by 16 foot or 192 square foot deck pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. On favor?
Hi.
Thank you. All right. So Brian is here for this one. So this is when the board has had an opportunity to review this application. I'm trying to keep myself in front of that light so it doesn't shine on you guys. This is, I think I told you the board that I did do a site visit on this one. This is set up on a hill. The house itself is fairly dark, so it blends in well with the trees. It's, there's a lot of vegetation and screening on both sides. You know, they have. They definitely had room at the top of the driveway there to be able to put this, this garage addition on to their house. So. And again, because they're screening on that right side of the house there where they're proposing to do this, I don't think it would be impactful to the neighbors. Of course, we'll hear from any of the neighbors that are interested tonight. And one important note on this is that there will be living space above this garage, but it will be the garage is attached. So it's not. It is not a detached garage where we would be concerned about living space. It will be attached with some kind of breezeway or something for them to be able to have that living space up there. So are there any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
Good.
Brian, anything else you want to add?
No, I think you summarized everything pretty clearly and. The site visit, I think, describes the site accurate. There's a lot of vegetation on the side and I believe that the applicant is wrenching neighbors and has had a discussion with them. So that's the only thing I wanted to add.
Yeah, and actually the trees that are there are evergreens too, you know, pine trees. So they're, it's, they're rear round. That's the screening is really good screening there. So. All right. So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the application for Courtney Shatino 13 Wright Boulevard, Hopewell Junction requesting a 16 foot sideline variance to allow a 24 foot by 30 foot attached garage with an addition above and a 13 foot sideline variance for a 12 by 16 square foot, 192 square foot deck? If so. Michael has used the raise hand function or press star nine.
Exactly.
Thank you. After all this time, you think I would have learned that? There's a question in the question and answer. Okay, we can get to that one.
And the Q and A is not for this one.
Right. I just saw that. All right. So seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you. Some, anybody want to offer the resolution?
Rocco?
Let me.
I have it available. I can go ahead if you want.
I got it. It's appeal number 4039 applicant is Courtney Shatino. To request for. One, a 16 foot sideline variance from the schedule of bulk regulations to allow 1,490 square foot garage with addition above and two, a 13 foot sideline variance from the requirements of the schedule of bulk regulations and section 194 dash 94 of the zoning ordinance for a 12 foot by 16 foot, 192 square foot deck, the variances. Location is 13 Wright Boulevard and Hopewell Junction. Resolution is being offered by zoning board member Rocco Limetone. Whereas the applicant desires more livable space and whereas the proposed garage will be attached to the existing home by a breezeway. And whereas the siding of the addition will match the existing house. And whereas two existing sheds at the property will be removed after proposed garage is constructed. And whereas the property is located on a hill, there's ample screening on its sides. And whereas this is a type two action under SECRA and no further review is required. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on August 17th of 2022. And whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on August 23rd of 2022. And whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that. The granting of the variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout of the property. Variances could be deemed substantial, but there is adequate screening which would mitigate any visual impacts. The variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request from Courtney Shatino. For one, a 16 foot sideline variance from the schedule bulk regulations to allow 1,490 square foot attached garage with addition above and two, a 13 foot sideline variance from the requirements of the schedule bulk regulations and section 194 dash 94 of the zoning ordinance for a 12 foot by 16 foot total 192 square foot deck. If further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Second.
Sorry, I forgot I put myself on mute. So thank you for the second. We have votes as follows. Jim?
Hi.
Aziz?
Hi.
Rocco?
Hi.
And Alberto?
Hi.
Okay, good. And myself, I. So Brian, you're, you're all set. Now you just deal with the building department, please.
Thank you guys. I appreciate.
All right. Have a good evening. All right. Item number two, appeal 4040 John Granger, John Granger, 41 Blackberry Way, Hopewell Junction is requesting a 407 square foot size variance for our proposed 757 square foot pool house pursuant to section 194 dash 107D of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So we did have an opportunity to, I see Mr. Granger's on with us that we did have an opportunity to review this at our last meeting. Where there's, it's a one acre zoning area, but he's got 1.178 acres. So he's got, you know, more than the required land that's there. The building inspector has been out to the site, has acknowledged that there's a lot of screening, a lot of vegetation on the lot. He's really proposing to put, he's got an in-ground pool already, kind of centered in the back of his yard. And he's looking to put a pool house, very nice pool house, because we've got the plans for it. Some of it somewhat covering over some of the papers that are out there already. But really, it's, you know, with all the screening that he's got, I don't see that it's, I personally don't see that it's a big deal. So any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
Again, we had an opportunity to look at this last month, at last, at our last meeting. Mr. Granger, anything else you'd like to offer?
No, I believe you have all the information that you need.
Yep.
I'm here for any questions.
Okay. Um. So is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against the request from John Granger, 41 Blackberry Way, Hopewell Junction requesting a 407 square foot size variance for a proposed 757 square foot pool house? Again, I probably should get into the record, the code allows for a 350 square foot accessory structure. So that's how we, why we have to look at this because it's greater than that 350 square feet. So if anybody wishes to speak, if you could press star nine or use the raise hand feature, I will get that straight.
It's totally straight.
Yeah, but I have to keep looking down at my notes to do, to say it.
I don't see any hands.
Okay. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. No, yes. If somebody wants to read the resolution.
In reference to appeal number 4040 by John Granger. Requesting a 407 square foot variance and the requirements of section 194 dash 107D of the town code for proposed 757 square foot pool house located at 41 Blackberry Way, Hopewell Junction. Resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer, whereas the applicant is proposing a 757 square foot pool house, which is less than 30% of the footprint of the house. And whereas the proposed pool house meets all other setbacks and there are no neighbors behind the property. Whereas the proposed location was selected to minimize visual impacts and to preserve the existing Koi pond. Whereas the proposed pool house is one story with no residential space. And whereas this is a type two action under CEQA and no further review is required. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on August 17th, 2022. Whereas the zoning board of appeals had a public hearing on August 23rd, 2022. Whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to location of existing house and natural features of the property. The variance is not substantial. The variance will have. Will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved, the zoning board of appeals hereby approves request from John Granger for our 407 square foot variance from the requirements section 194 dash 107D of the town code for proposed 757 square foot pool house. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution we filed with the town clerk and a copy sent the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Hi.
Rocco?
Aye.
And Alberto? Good. And myself, I. So. Mr. Granger, your motion carries. You now will deal with the building department. All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
You too.
All right. So folks, that's the end of our public hearings this evening. So the rest of our agenda this evening is reviews. So the first one is actually an application that we've seen a couple of times. But you know, we've just needed some additional information. So let me start with that one. Item number three is appeal 4035 Michael Curcio, 33 Cherry Lane, Hopewell Junction requesting a 22 foot sideline variance to allow our proposed 20 foot by 24 foot or a 528 square foot addition to a pre-existing non-conforming detached garage, a 24 foot sideline and a 20 foot front yard variance to allow an existing 23 foot by 24 foot or 552 pre-existing non-conforming garage and a 282 square foot area variance for a proposed 1,032 square foot detached garage. So that's the total garage pursuant to section 198 dash 107 in the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. So again, this is not a public hearing. We're here for discussion. So since the last meeting, I can tell you that I went over and did a site visit. Um. There's a lot of construction on a lot of the homes in your area. Okay. Which is great. It's good to see that people are making investment. But I'll tell you, there were a lot of garage. There were a lot of buildings that were very close, you know, fairly close to the road, including some standalone garages, detached garages. Many of them were not in good shape at all. So, and that's what worries me about detached garages. I don't know how long you folks have lived at your home. But you know, the, the, the one thing about structures being so close to the road is they're so visible. And when people don't maintain them well, they, as you acknowledge yourself a couple of meetings ago, Mr. Chris, they do become eyesore. They do really stand out that people don't take care of them. And so, I mean, even one of your immediate neighbors. Hmm, that, that garage was not in great shape. Okay. And I'm trying to be nice. Okay. Um, so it worries me when we have structures that are so close to the road and yours literally is one car length. Okay. You also have a lot going on on your, and you have that, you talked about where the pool used to be that you have that, you wanted a patio setup. Well, it's essentially there now. And then you have this little. I'm going to say lean to, for lack of a better word, kind of this open shed, okay, in that back, that darker structure that's in the back there. Um, so you know, for your, your lot is undersized for the area that this, it should be, but again, other lots in that area are as well. So I'm not, you know, I'm not taking fault with that per se. But I just felt like your lot had a lot going on on it. The screening that's there, I saw the oversized grasses. Okay. So I can see where you, you made the comment that sometimes fling out of your driveway might be a little difficult. But I didn't see that they screened really the structure. Well, you do as you're coming up from fiscal farms, you kind of come over a rise and then come down. So it kind of affords you a view of the, of all your property there. This, the grasses did not provide really any screening there. Coming from the other direction. You know, you really see that structure, that that structure is right there. So you know, the white side, the, the full side of it is right there, although there was a car parked in the road. You know, what the morning that I was there. So. You guys were not home. If you had been, there was, at least there were no cars in your driveway, except the one that was right next to the garage under the tarp there. So I would have, you know, at least called you and acknowledged, let you know that I was there, but. So. I'll tell you, I have concerns about such a large structure being so close to the road with the additional shed, you know, or, or lean to in the back there. It's, it's, it's a tough sell. It's really, for me, it was, it's, it's going to be tough to, you know, acknowledge you have two car garage already. I don't know. I just find that it would be, you have the option of putting it in the back there and then you don't even need this board's approval. So I know you're, that's not your preference, but I just think you have options. Again, I'm one of five members. Okay. Cause we're back to a full membership on this board. So I do want to give other members an opportunities to speak. I don't know if anybody else has had an opportunity to go over there. But I just wanted to let you know, I did take the time to go over there and, and just really spend some time and looking at the neighborhood, driving around to see the character of it. And that's why I saw there's a lot of structures in your area under construction and a lot that haven't been taken care of for probably quite a few years. So, so anyway, I'm going to open it up to other board members if they have comments or questions at this time.
If I'm not mistaken, hello there, first of all.
Hello.
If I'm not mistaken, let me just refresh my memory a little bit. I was looking through the notes and the proposed building is going to be right where the filled in pool is, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And if I remember. You showed us a picture of it. It was going to be a little bit different than the garage that's there now.
Yes, yes.
I think it had some railing, a front or some window. I remember it looked pretty nice.
And we did make it smaller.
Yes, we actually made it smaller from the last time we spoke.
Okay.
We made it smaller and we changed the appearance. We made the front look like a barn, a barn opening.
Okay.
Those are the new plans. So we.
Sorry, can I be clear? Is, was that, were those the plans that you gave us for the July meeting or do have you changed it subsequent to then?
I believe those were for the July meeting that was canceled. Well, you know, we weren't able to, to do the meeting.
Well, no, 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 we, we, we didn't have a quorum. So we were, we were, we were not able to do the meeting. You guys were there. So.
We, the, the structure again, we scaled it. And we made the front entrance look like a opening. And again, the idea to redo the, the existing garage, the front of it to beautify what we have, make a patio, a sitting area with a fire pit. Now that's, that's the whole idea for that, that area where the old in-ground pool was.
I think I remember you mentioning that. Okay. Actually, one question I have for right now, I just wanted to familiarize myself with what you were doing. So you're, you're improving on the one that's there and then you're building the new structure.
Correct.
One of my big concern, as Norman has pointed out also, is that basically. You, I mean, your garage, the way it is, it, right now, it is one car length and you're on the road. And then when you go around, is it possible to? Maybe close the front of this garage and have an opening from the side as you're making this new structure so that in the future. I mean, that area is, you know, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's just way too close to the. I mean, it basically looks like a big house and next to a garage. I mean, when you put these two structures next to each other. So I'm trying to figure out a solution. And then you have this gate also. I don't know if it opens or closed, but. So, so again, they just, it's way too close to the road and that's one of my big concern. And again, then the structure becomes too big.
Well, that's why the, the last three times we scaled it down. I know the last time that we were there. The concern was it was too high. And we. Decided to go even smaller in length and width and smaller in height. I, I just, I'm trying to conform to the board. I didn't. I didn't feel that we would really build in an eyesore. We're, we're trying to build, you know, and make it nicer, not make it worse, to be very honest with you. We want to make it nicer.
I am, let me build on what Aziz actually just said, because actually I kind of like that idea. What if you, because if you look at the, your size of the building and I see your architect is here. So you're building on the front roadway side is 20 feet, four inches. But sideways on that is 23 foot, four inches. So Richard would have to tell us it's just a typical garage is 24 foot by 24 foot. So it's a little bit shy, but could you move the two bays to that one side? So you actually have three bay, all three bays on that one side?
I, I mean, anything could be done. It's a question of cost. Right now. The estimates that were given to me for the plans that Rich had made are, is in upward of $100,000, maybe $125,000. To close the front of the garage and open up the side of the garage. I can only imagine it would be significant money. And again, I'm, I'm only a working guy. You know, we're on a budget. I don't think that would be in my plans, to be very honest with you.
But I think the plan is to upgrade that garage, you know, so and kind of make it kind of red as a one building and we think it's adequately pleasing and I think probably would involve replacing the garage door to something a little more effective.
Yes, the front, the front doors are, are going to be replaced with barn doors. So everything would match, you know, to get that country look.
All right. Just so we're clear, Richard, are we looking at the, the latest set of plans as those that were amended on July 12th, 2022?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah. So we see, we see the plans that show the, the barn door kind of garage, the doors there.
And that would, that would correspond with the new front doors that are facing the road.
Right. Yeah. We'd replace the front garage door. So there's, you know, where's that we pleasing? And this deciding as well, you know, it's going to, the whole, you know, existing garage is going to get a, a major upgrade.
Yes.
And just to recap what we changed since we originally came before you, I think we started with a 22 foot wide addition. We shrunk it to 20 feet. We also tucked the, we, the addition was projecting out towards the driveway and we pushed it back. So it's flush with the existing garage. And then with this new gambrel design. And then with this new gambrel design roof, we're able to lower the roof by four feet from what we originally had, which, so we had a twenty-foot ridge height. Now we're down to sixteen, so we are trying to kind of bring this, the, the massing down this. You know, as small as possible with, we're still making it functional for my clients. And then we also, we listened to what you had said about screening, and we're proposing six arborvitae. On the west side of the driveway, that'll, you know, those, those things grow like five feet a year, I think so. I mean, they'll, they'll kind of screen it from the road, you know, plus we're also adding another ornamental grass. I know that doesn't do as much, but I think arborvitae will really screen it from the, from view from the road.
When you say the west, with, is, am I going up the hill or am I coming down the hill?
On the driveway, if you're, if you go in the driveway, you know, kind of opposite side of the driveway from the addition. There's six arborvitae on the site plan that we're proposing.
As you went to the.
Yeah, you see that, normally you see that on the first page.
Oh, there, got it, sorry, I was thinking he was gonna be in the front by the grasses.
We, I think it'd be better screening, you know, on the, along that side, if, if we were gonna screen the building, yeah.
Mentioned a made about barn door style doors for the garage. Are these truly barn doors in the sense of they're gonna slide, a roll on a rail on top? Or you're just gonna replace the existing doors with roll-up doors that look like barn doors?
My, my plan was to originally have a, a true barn door. That opened up, you know, two doors that swing open, but my builder suggested to put garage doors. That they mimic a, a barn door, and they would go up into the garage. That, that was the recommendation of my builder.
The reason I asked, that if you're doing the other one, you probably have to do other framing work to accommodate two barn doors. So I was wondering about how you're figuring in the cost of that, and that's why I was. Then go back to the questions that were being asked previously about just moving the doors to the side.
Yes, the.
Enclosing the existing doors is, is, is very minor, I mean, it's very quick framing. Open the other ones, maybe needing some headers to carry the roof and stuff might be more, but if you have putting in sliding. Or rolling garage doors, that would probably require some structural work as well. I don't have the, the new ones for some reasons, I don't know how much, I expressed a lot of concern about the, the massive size of the addition that you put on. I'm not quite sure, but it seems like you worked hard on reducing the, you know, overall impact of the size of the garage. And I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you.
So to see it that way, but. The gambrel.
Yep.
So it's almost, it's, it's pretty much a different style than it was originally.
Yeah, we wanted to make the, I know that the concern the last time was the height of the garage. And we, we cut it down four foot. And we will still be able to use it for storage in the top, you know, so. I, I, I'm trying to. To work with, with the board. I, I just don't, I don't, I don't wanna just. Dismiss the idea, I'm, I'm really looking forward to, to building the addition if we get approved. And, and that's the reason why we've been scaling it down, and we kind of changed the appearance, and my wife looked in some. Home and gardens books, and we have ideas for patio and a fire pit that would totally change the look of, of the area. Totally.
Well, we definitely appreciate you taking the comments into consideration and changing everything, thank you.
Thank you.
A, as far as I'm concerned, I don't have a problem with the two garage doors in the front facing the, the, being that close to the street, because I see it a lot in town. So I don't see that as an issue. I mean, I see this as kind of an upgrade to what's there now, rather than looking at a concrete pad. Think this will look a little bit better with screen that you're gonna provide. I mean, the only problem I see is that screening may hurt you a little bit when you're backing out of the garage, when you're backing out of the driveway, or coming out of the driveway. But otherwise, I mean, the screening, I think is gonna provide a nice coverage. I mean, that's my opinion, I don't see it as being really intrusive or, based on what the chairwoman said about other. Barrages in the neighborhood, I haven't seen them, so I didn't do a drive-by. So her comments about the other garages being a lot, being run down.
Yes.
Improvement for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So any other comments or by the board, or what's the pleasure of the board?
I mean, I would, to be honest with you, I mean, you're already spending so much money and improving the whole structure. Having all three bay doors on the same side will basically force everybody to come into the asphalt driveway. And then it'll be all consistent, and I do understand the cost associated with it, but. You know, you're trying to improve the whole structure, and you're putting brand-new doors up there, so the cost might be substantially smaller than what you're anticipating. But it may, would make it, you know, aesthetically much better, plus it'll be three bays all in one row. As opposed to two on one side and one on the other side, so, but, you know, again, if that's what you want, I mean. And you wanna go forward, I don't have a problem with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the cost would be pretty prohibitive to move the doors, I know what you're saying, Aziz, but the cost. Prohibitive, because you'd have to change the whole roof.
Everything, everything would happen.
I understand what Aziz is saying.
It's a concrete block structure also, so that makes it more complicated to modify than it was, you know, two-by-four wood frame.
But it would have helped to not have that car, you know, the. To have a car parked in the front there, that's all, it's just, to me, it, it doesn't belong there, so. Um, so what's the pleasure of the board at this point, I mean, we can schedule it for public hearing, I know he's already gotten a couple letters from the neighbors, so.
Motion to re-derise?
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, so folks, we'll see you next month on this one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number four, appeal four zero four one, Fausto Gonzalez, Seven Angela Court, Hobo Junction. Requesting a ten-foot rear line variance for an existing fourteen-foot by fourteen-foot or one hundred and ninety-six square foot pavilion. Pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance, Mr. Gonzalez.
Mr. Gonzalez, if you're here, can you please hit the raise your hand function, or star nine if you called in, or if a representative is here, I'm having Mr. Gonzalez, please do the same. Okay, it looks like a representative's here.
So is that Matthew Santos?
Yes, you raised it.
Okay, can he speak, or?
Mr. Santos, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
So this is the first time we're seeing this, this application, so we need you to take us through what you're looking for, please.
So the building was, the building was put up. And there was a variance, I was told I needed to file, because there was a problem with the distance between the building and the property line. So I, I guess I needed to hear that from you, I would, this was brought to my attention. The, the property is shaped, is an odd shape, so if you can see from the drawing that I submitted, it's like a triangle shape. So where the, the pavilion that we built. I, I was under the impression that it was, it was with the distance that was required.
Okay, are you the homeowner, or are you?
No, I'm, I'm the builder, I'm representing the homeowner.
Was the, was, what, what, what's the new construction, justice?
So we built a pavilion, a fourteen-by-fourteen pavilion, it's all wide open, it has a, a roof on it, shingle roof. And I put an outdoor kitchen in there as well. So I handed in all of the drawings for the pavilion, I handed in the. I had a, a new survey done of the property, where it states where the pavilion is on the property line. It's right next to the pool that we, it was just put in as well.
All right, I'm not see, on the survey that I have, I don't see any distances on here.
I handed in a brand-new survey months ago.
I have a survey dated June eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, my, my service is June eighth, also, twenty twenty-two.
Do you see distances on yours, Aziz?
Yeah, the distances, if you go, mine's June eighth, twenty twenty-two as well, and if you go to. The, the, it says gazebo in the back, it's right next to the pavers, it gives a distance, that's fifty-six.
To where, what to what line, I don't, I'm not understanding what the measurement is.
That's the fifty-six point two is from the property line.
To where?
To the property line, that's stated right behind, that's right behind it.
No, 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 to where on the gazebo, though? Usually the, the, the measurement corresponds with a line, so we can see exactly which line is measured at fifty-six point two feet.
Is it to the corner, is it, is it to the corner of the?
So if you see on the, if you can see on the, on the drawing, how the, the shape of the lot is a triangle shape. It's taking from the farthest pole, there's four poles on the gazebo, it's fourteen by fourteen. It's taking from the farthest pole closest to the property line, and right next to it is fifty-six point two.
Where the curve is?
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's multiple, there's the square, and then there's another, half of the square has an extra outline to it, and then you've got another. What is probably your patio, so it's, it's, that's why I'm saying, it's not clear to me why there was, what, what's the line, where is it to?
So the corner of the patio, so you see, if you're looking at the drawing, you see the pool, and then you go over to the gazebo. You see that on your drawing?
Yes, yes, we see it, but again, there is no lead line connecting the fifty-six point two to something. Everything else has a lead line, so.
No, no, there's nothing here with a lead line, there's no. There's numbers all over the place, but they're not telling me where, to what part of the structures they connect to. This isn't, this was not a good survey.
I mean, for example, right by the shed, it says eighty-one point four inches, I have no idea where. You know, for example, where does eighty-one point four connect to?
Yeah, eighty-one feet, four inches, but, but backyard rear, rear line variance is fifty feet, so if you have fifty-six point two, why do you need a variance?
This is, I was told this is what I would have to do, I, I have no idea.
What am I missing, guys?
I, I, I'm obviously missing something as well.
I, I mean, next to the paver patio, it says fifty-eight point eight inches, so if it is fifty-eight inches, it's over fifty inches.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not where the gazebo is, though.
That's even, the gazebo is even farther than the, the paver patio over there outside.
Your measurement is saying it's less, saying, your measurement is saying it's closer.
That's exactly my point, that, you know, the numbers.
So if it's further, then again, your measurements are off.
No, it's, so if you look at it again, you're, you're right, I'm not disagreeing with you, it's a, it's a triangle. So it's closer here, and as it goes out, it gets farther, so it's, it's shaped, like I said, as a triangle. So right here, it's closer, and as you go out towards the end, it gets farther and farther, it's a, an odd-shaped property.
Um, I'm sorry, but I would need a new survey with the proper numbers, because I can't make a decision. Or I can't even move it to advertise.
What is the decision that you need to, to have?
I just need all the numbers, I mean, Norma, can you explain?
So what we, what we need to see is all of the structures on the property, how close they are to the appropriate side yards, rear yards, whatever it is. Because you got, you've got a number of things here, the propane tanks, how close are the propane tanks to the, to your lot line?
So I've, we've had several people come out from the town, Ray's been out there a few times, I don't know who. There was some, there was another gentleman out there as well, as a representative from the town as well, I was told by my client, I've met Ray out there as well.
So Matt, have you been out there?
I went out there, but we're, we're basing this original referral to zoning. On a survey that was done much earlier than the one that you guys are referencing now. That showed the pavilion forty feet from the back lot line.
Yeah, and therein lies the problem, I'm looking at that too, now, the question is, how far is it? Then we need to know precisely the other things from the lot line, if you do need a variance. Because if we're gonna hear it, we gotta make sure everything is the appropriate distance from the property lines. We don't just look at one thing in isolation, we have to make sure there's no viol, other violations on the property that we're required to do that. So that's why there's so much time being spent on where this is precisely located.
Because, because my, thank you, Jim, my point is, it appears that the twenty-eight point two feet might be the corner of the shed, but I really don't know. Because there's also a thirty-three point six feet, I don't know what that's, numbers just.
Well, that shed is, that shed's been there from the, I have no idea, that shed.
Letting me finish, okay, hold on, but the propane tanks are closer, and you're only allowed a twenty-five, you're, you have to have a twenty-five foot front yard, a side yard there. So if you're at twenty-eight point two, I don't know if that's to the propane tanks, or I don't know if that's the corner of the shed, that's what I'm getting at. So I, if we're gonna clean up the lot here, let's clean up the lot. So we need a better, we need a better survey, this is not.
Yeah, what I would suggest is going back to the engineer or the architect, and saying, put numbers in here. And give me all the measurement, and just tell them that you were in front of the zoning board. So any architect or engineer knows exactly what the zoning board needs.
And the lines connecting the two points.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, because there's not enough information here for us to determine, it could be, you don't even need us. Now that Matt is saying that you've got a better survey than what you had back in April, could be you're free and clear without us. So it's in your best interest to get the survey with the correct measurements and the correct lines on there. All right.
Okay. I, we can, I, I, we paid to have this done, I will contact.
Yeah, I'm, I'm surprised.
I just know the client is just a little frustrated, because she's just trying to close, the pool is new, and the patio is new. So she's just trying to close the permit for the project, and it's been ongoing for, for quite some time, the, the project's been over for a few months now.
Okay, but, but we don't, we don't have what we need to, to act on this, so that's.
And it may be the surveyor can just do what he needs to be done without even going to the prop or anything. He might have those measurements down somewhere, because he put numbers down.
Yeah, there's stakes.
I'm surprised he didn't put the lines and tell us what he was measuring.
Okay.
All right, so we, you know, again, when it, when it, when we get the survey, the staff should be able to look at this and see whether you need to come back or not.
Okay, so get the survey and just come, show what we have, and we may not have to.
Yeah, get it, get it into Jackie, and she'll review, or review it with the building department or the town planner, and they'll be able to tell you whether you need to come back.
Got it.
Because if you've got fifty-six feet to the corner of the gazebo, I don't see why you're here.
What do you want me to have, fifty?
All you need is fifty.
Okay.
To the best of my knowledge, at least.
That's correct.
And we're saying it's fifty, just.
From the rear.
And why is it not fifty, why is it not twenty-five and fifty?
Rear yard is fifty feet versus the side yard is twenty-five feet.
And we're considering this a side yard?
You're considering, we're considering this a rear yard. Because it's the back of the house. Because it's the back of the house.
Okay.
But there are other issues also that we need to review also. So.
Right, right.
That is why we're looking at all the side yard and the backyard and the rear yard.
Right, we just need to be clear this that's a shed and the tanks, etc. Everything's all where it should be. Okay?
Okay.
So get the get Bobby Oswald to put a little bit more information on here and then the town, the staff can review it in the office and let you know if you need to come back or not.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, number five, Michael Appeal four zero four two, Michael Halloran. Eleven Lori Street, Poughkeepsie is requesting to build on an undersized lot that's more or less point eight six of an acre in an R one zone on Birch Drive pursuant to section one ninety four dash one thirty of the zoning ordinance. So Mr. Halloran, oh, here you are. All right. So Mr. Halloran, this is the first time we're seeing your application. I know you were there at the July meeting when we could not hold the meeting. So if you could take us through what the issue is, we'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. So I'm buying, looking to purchase the lot from Mr. Spellman. On Birch Drive. And he had taken his two lots. He owned both of them and he put them into one. So I'm almost positive that it's a little over point eight of an acre. And prior to my brother in law had bought a house of a lot a few years ago and he made me aware that. You could correct me if I'm wrong, that we would need an acre. To build our house. So when I heard that, I just before purchasing the lot. The owner and I spoke and I kind of wanted to go through some. You know, finding information before I invest something and making sure that if I did buy the lot, that I would be able to build and get a variance for the acre. Since I'm below that.
Okay, so I need a little bit more information. When was this lot created?
The lot, when was the lot created by the owner? I'm not sure of the the date. What do you mean created? Like, when did he put the?
I mean, is it just the lot predate zoning and that's why it's undersized? Or was it created on purpose to be undersized? Knowing then that a house would not be built on this property?
Um, well, what the owner has told me is that he has always taken it as when he puts it up for sale. That he says that it's it would need a variance because it's below an acre. But that at point eight, most most lots that are purchased are able to build on. And that's the way he said it to me, but I was a little bit, you know, I just wanted to. Make sure and cross my Ts and dot my Is that when I that when I buy the lot, that a variance would be approved. To build on this lot.
So you're doing the right thing, but for us to dot our Is and cross the Ts, we need to know when this lot was created.
Okay, so and I apologize that I don't know what you mean by that, but you mean created like when did he merge the two lots into one?
Well, that's the question. If if there's two smaller lots that were. Created or subdivided out from a bigger lot, but before zoning. And they've been joined together to make even bigger lot. That. Means a lot, but if it was.
That is that is what he did. So I think that's what. I was hoping the survey would show. I think he owned two. Smaller lots, two smaller pieces of area. And he went to the town. I don't I I I'm almost positive it was maybe like five years ago.
Well, it's that be after zoning. So that's the question. If he put them together five years ago, that's one thing. If the lot smaller lot were created before, but that's what we need to know. If he had two pieces of land and he. Cut off, you know, four tenths of an acre off each. Of two other lots and made that one thinking now I have three lots to build on. That would be something else.
Yeah, did this this does? Did this owner own additional lots in this area?
Besides the the two that he merged together that I'm looking at?
Correct.
I'm not positive. I know that his. I know that his 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 family lived in a house there. His parents, they they like grew up there. They're they're like their whole lives, he told me. But in terms of. Does he own other property or real estate in the neighborhood? I I do not think so.
All right, but he didn't he didn't grow up on a house on these lots.
No, no, nothing's ever been built on these lots.
Likely owned additional property in this area. Michael, do we have a history on this one? Sorry, I'm talking to our attorney here. Michael.
Oh, I'm sorry. Not that I know of. So I think Mr. Halloran, what you're gonna have to do is, um. Because normally how lots are created when we're saying that is, you know, you look at a lot of different neighborhoods. There's a subdivision. Plat which gets filed with the county and they'll create various lots. And at times these lots get further subdivided or at times certain lots get merged. So I think what the board's asking for is we the board really needs to know what is actually going on with this current lot. And how it was created.
The the current lot was merged, what the lot that exists now was merged by two smaller. Lots that he owned adjacent to each other.
We understand that. We've heard that.
The board, the board understands what's going on. I think what they need is actual dates. If there was a prior subdivision map that shows this, I I think they need a a lot more.
Okay, I get I get what you're saying now.
Yeah, we're trying to get at how did the two lots get created?
I got you. I apologize.
Essentially, the board's understanding it. It's just they need some more specifics. So at times, at times, you could run a title search, which may show it. It may give you some, may point out which maps to look at. Or maybe, you know, the current owner has other information that he can share with you. But I think the board's gonna need a little more information in order to make a decision on this.
Because one of the issues, Mr. How O'Halloran, is that if the if this owner owns additional lots in this area, then why can't he make this a legal sized lot?
Oh, you mean like, does he own a more adjacent lots to the one that already?
That's part of the question.
No, he does not.
The the answer may be in the current deed for this property. That deed may describe. How this lot was created and where the properties that.
You know, now that you guys are saying it, the way that you're saying it, he told me. To all to pretty much tell the board to tell you guys that he did this with the town of East Fishkill and that it should be documented. That he that he went through this, this, I'm sorry, I don't know the exact words, not subdivide, but. You know.
Merger merger merger.
Yeah, to merge them together. He said it should all be documented with the town of East Fishkill. He did it. You know, I could look through the text right now. I'm trying to look through them as I speak to you guys.
But that's only one piece of it.
Let me know how the two lots were came about.
Right. So I I think the board's gonna need a lot more documentation in order to make a decision on this one.
So how do I know what the specific documentation should be? I mean.
No, at the very least, at the very least, I'll give you a few things you're gonna have to take a look at. You're gonna have to look at whatever deed created these lots.
Okay.
You're gonna have to get that. If there's a subdivision plat showing this area, that would be helpful as well. And if the current owner is saying that there's something in the file, then you can always come into the office and take a look at the file.
Okay.
When the current owner owner bought each each of these lots or divided the lots or subdivided or whatever the current owner did. He or she would have a history that he or she can share with you. So that's why. You know, we need that history to figure out. Did he buy them individually from somebody else? And did he then merge it for something, you know, to create it or did he subdivide it? So there's a history that goes with it. And again, title search or looking at the Dutchess County. You know, records they can, you can trace the history of how these lots have have evolved over the last. You know, fifty years, let's say.
Okay, all right. So do a title search, find out the deed, how they were created and what and I would bring all that info back to the next meeting.
Submit it ahead of time, correct?
I submit it ahead of time.
Yeah, if you can get it into the clerk ahead of time, as soon as you can get it in, it would give us a chance to look at it before the next meeting, our attorney to look at it and the planner to look at it. And then that would that would tell us again whether. What you're looking to do makes sense or not.
That's perfect. I can definitely do that. And and I I almost feel like. I came unprepared, but I mean, the last. Two months that I've been asking, what should I bring in? What should I do with Jackie and stuff? I mean, it was just it was the survey and and that, I mean, I would have, I wish I would have printed out the title. Search and the and the deed and and had all that for you guys, but I will definitely have it. You know, I'll get it all this week and get it to you guys very quickly. Sorry about that.
No problem.
All right.
No subdivision.
Say that again?
This is Matt. I was saying that there is no subdivision now.
So these lots were created.
How are you?
Somebody just do lines on a map?
Are there other properties with similar, you know, lot sizes? I mean. I don't know the neighborhood. I mean, so if there was no subdivision of these lots, how were these lots created? I mean, if there was no. You know, other neighborhood that had all these things and all these small lots. So.
All right, let's Mr. How O'Halloran, let's get you to get us some information. We'll take a look at it and then. We'll hopefully be able to resolve this at the next meeting.
Okay, cool.
Maybe even before the next meeting. All right.
All right, that would be great. Thank you so much for you guys.
All right.
And I'm a little new to some of these things. So thank you.
Right, we'll we'll see you next month.
Okay, cool.
All right, item number six, Appeal four zero four three, Kevin Keegan, seventeen Sunny Lane, Stormville, requesting a sixty five foot sideline variance for a ground mounted solar panel pursuant to the schedule of book regulations of the zoning ordinance. So we need whoever is here for Mr. Keegan. Oh, and Kevin is here himself. Okay, good. All right, folks, so. From the looks of this, this is not the blue hill one. We have two solar applications in a row. So let me get the Kevin Keegan, the right one. So from the looks of this, you have quite a lot wide lot. So we need to understand why do you need to put this so close to your neighbor? Why can't it be more in your backyard?
The. It can be if it went in the very middle, it would cut the backyard in half. And there are also pole mounts or pole mounts already in the side yard. That it would kind of blend with. We've talked with each of our neighbors. The listeners, which is on the side where the we're asking for variance are are fine with having the pole or having the brown mount put there.
All right, so let's ask, how did the existing solar array get put up?
That was put up in twenty eleven. Twenty twenty eleven and.
And how far away is that from your side yard? I don't have a measurement on your survey here.
I don't have the exact dimensions or exactly, but the the dotted line on the survey is fifteen feet. So I would imagine is twenty five. I think it was twenty five and fifty fifty from the back and twenty from them from the side at that at that time.
What dotted line is fifteen?
Do you see where the word listener is on the survey? It's on the top.
Can the new proposed ones go behind the existing ones?
Then they would be they would be closer to the first of they would be closer to the backyard and that. There are.
Going away, but that's my license further away than the existing one. That way you're further away from the existing one of both lot lines.
All right, I have two. I have a survey. From Boicaland Surveying and then we have something from Castleman Solar. That shows us where the new proposed solar mount is. The existing survey just shows solar panels. Which don't line up with what Castleman Solar shows as the existing solar array. So I'm sorry, I'm definitely confused here because even the residence is. Very different in terms of all the things that are in your backyard. That aren't showing up on the Castleman survey. So I I think I need to have the. New solar array, proposed solar array, put on your survey. That that is a. That would be a normal occurrence.
You want Castleman to put it on the survey? Is that what you're saying?
No, the surveyor. Somebody should be able to give the information to the surveyor to have him put it on there because you have a lot of exist of structures on here and I'm not even sure you're allowed all these structures. What are all these coops?
We have rabbits.
In a garden shed? I mean, Matt, how many structures they allowed?
There's no limit on the number of structures currently normal. You have to look at building coverage. If that's the only thing we can.
The accessory structures. I thought there was a limit on. Oh, there's limit on how many sheds.
Yeah, no limit on sheds. I mean, but after the first shed, it's really technically an accessory structure, but according to Michelle. Because I've raised this a few times, it comes down to building coverage.
Yeah, it comes down to building coverage, but then you need permits if you have more than. Accessory structure, don't you? I mean, so there are requirements in the code as to what you need to have all those buildings on the property.
Because I'm seeing it. I don't know about anybody, but I'm seeing six coops. That's a lot of rabbits.
I only see four, but.
There's three and there's three altogether. Then there's one adjacent to a fence. Then there's one. In the middle of your backyard and then there's one toward the back of your backyard.
Yes. Okay, the one that's in the middle, I don't know the middle, the one that's it's in the back actually is not on my, the one that I survey that I have. That's just a movable. That's not an attached structure. So I I asked them, why did they put that on? The survey that you you have, but. They they don't. They removed it because it's not a it's not attached to the ground at all.
It's not attached to the ground is it?
It's not. It's it's movable. It's not.
Doesn't matter. It's.
Um, what I would suggest is to go back to the surveyor because we have, I mean, I have two surveys. One is from Castleman Solar. And the other one is from. Oh, see land or surveying and that one has a date, but the Castleman Solar doesn't have a date. It just says sheet two of two. So I don't know where the sheet one of. Two is. So I would like to see all of it on one. Out to for me to go forward, but otherwise I'm totally confused and I don't want to waste my time looking at this thing. So I want everything in one server.
Do you want it on on Castleman survey? Because they, I mean, I don't I don't because it's.
It doesn't. It doesn't matter which, as long as all the structures, the old solar panels, the proposed solar panels, everything is on one survey. And they're all and with the with the with the measurements from the from the backyard and the side yard. And all the, you know, all the distances are all on one survey. But again, it says one, you know, two of two. I don't know where one of two is. So I mean, are you giving us fragmented? I mean, giving me fragmented.
One of two is definitely in the document packet. Um, it's a it's in color and it's in it's based on an aerial photo.
Okay, but let's understand something while you're at it. Okay. You're showing. I I need to understand why this can't be in where it should be. Because between here and and you're on your lot, you're showing no screening. I don't know if you're proposing to put in screening. You're not telling us that. And you're it looks like the array that you're proposing to put in here is twice the size of what's there already. So so what does the existing solar array serve and why do you need an additional panel that's twice the size? Are you replacing it? Are you adding to it? What's going on here?
I think as far as the first question, as far as screening, I think, Matt, you were there. I think it was Matt, right? Did you come in? And I don't know if you want to talk about. That part. I can talk about it too, but.
It's well screened. Dharma, there is a lot of trees. If you look at the. I think it's the Castleman survey. You see the existing trees and their evergreens. So there's a lot of screening to the neighbor and in the rear of the property. So there's a lot of screening uh, to the neighbor and in the rear of the property.
I see two trees behind this solar array on the neighbor's property. I see on the other side of the property, there's a lot of screening. And in the front of this property, there's a lot of screening. So you're not likely to see it from the road, I'll give you that. Not likely to see it from the back of the property, but that one neighbor, the listener side, um. Looks like, looks like they're going to see it unless they've got some significant vegetation on their property.
Yeah, so on the listener side actually is where the, there's a, a, a big row of pine trees that, that Matt was talking about. And so if you're standing actually where the proposed panels are going to be, you actually can't even see the listener's house. Um, you can't see their pool, um, because the pine trees cover that. And as I said before, the listeners, they said that's, it's fine to be there. And I'll have notes um, for you guys. I know, for each of the neighbors. Jackie said that I could bring them to the next meeting.
That's fine. But normally we need to identify and get on the record so that we're not setting a precedent for the next person that wants to come in. Why can't it be, why can't you meet the required SEPA? Is that, is your septic system there? Your fields are there? Is the topography different that it doesn't allow this? What's there that makes this property unique that you need to, you can't move it in?
And the, into the middle of the backyard. I can, I can answer that. Um, so the septic field is in the middle of the backyard. Um, if you were moved a hundred feet in, that's where the fields are and the distribution tank um, is right in that middle.
Again, a, a survey should show that.
Okay. Um, the, I don't know, and not, I know you want it on the surface, so that's fine. I don't know if you can see it, if you have, I don't have it in front of me, the, the picture of the, um, this, the satellite picture, you can really see where, where the fields are usually on those, but again, I don't, I can't see it in front of me. Um, so yes, it does go there. Two of our backyard neighbors said that they would also prefer it not to be in the middle of the backyard, because it's more visible actually for everybody if it's in the middle of the backyard. Um, it's, the listeners can't see it, which are the, the ones that are directly next to us. If it's, no matter where it is, if we put it in the very center of the backyard, then our two back neighbors can see it much more clearly. So it is tucked away on that side, it's tucked away, and it doesn't show it on the, on this, the survey that I have, but where the solar panels are right now, um, if you go north of that on a property, it's, it's woods. So there's no house that's right there. It's just, it's just a bunch of woods that the listeners have. And, and Matt can, I don't know if you remember, Matt, if, what, seeing those there, but.
I didn't notice before, but so north is, you, you want to put it along the north line of your property.
Yes, and if you're looking at the, the Oracle Land, I don't know how to say that name either. Um, it's to the right of where the, the solar panels are now.
And, so I mean.
Or to the.
I think certainly you can minimize the setback variance required. At the very least, you can be further away and further to, as you look at to the left or the back of your property, except you have that one tree there that may block some sun that they're worried about, how far away they want to be from there, but. And I guess the thing in the back of my mind, was a building permit obtained for the existing solar array? Was that inspected?
Yeah, but it was probably before the town had uh zoning in place for solar array. Mounted solar arrays.
Yeah, I, I do, I'm sorry, but I do remember them saying it has to be fifty feet from the back of the property and twenty-five feet from the side.
No, that's for something else. That's not for solar arrays.
Well, they would have, that would have been treating it as an accessory.
Back then.
Okay, back then, back then, yeah. Okay, so then, that's, that's what those numbers are.
So again, so you know, by coming towards the middle of the property a little bit and towards the left, you could probably stay a hundred feet away from the back rapid line and, and get, you know, much further away than you are than that thirty-five feet that's now showing. Because your property lines, based on the way they're drawn, are going away in both directions. As you move it in directions, I say that you could probably do it to minimize your requested variance.
And so, so I understand, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I, uh, you can finish answering Jim's question, but then I still want my other questions answered.
Okay, yes, yes. So if I understand, then you're saying, if instead of having it along the property line to the right of the solar panels that are there, you, you would want it moved a little bit more towards the, the middle of the property.
Yeah, because you're a hundred seventeen feet away in the back, so you at least go seventeen feet closer to the back. And by, and moving it to that seventeen feet smaller, you are getting further away on your thirty-five feet, because the further you go to the left, as you look at it, the further away you get from the property line, because the property line's at an angle to the solar array. And then maybe you can bump it up for a few feet too. Um, and maybe, you know, I don't know how big that tree is, what's required, but you may not want it right underneath that tree for obvious reasons, but it certainly seems that you can easily get further away and more in compliance with the code without going right smack in the middle too, and you have to at least try to minimize any variance required.
That makes, that makes perfect sense. And I, and I actually think that that, and I will let, and I'm sorry, I don't know the Castleman Solar, what's your name? I can't, I don't know.
That's all right.
Um, but, oh, Alex. So yes, that makes sense, and knowing my property, you, you can slide that um, away from the, uh, the north property line closer to the middle. I'm, I'm certain of it, and Alex, you can you can chime in.
Um, yes, we can, we can go out and get that um, reassessed and restaked um, to return with a more minimized relief. Um, we can also get um, more supporting uh, photography as well to just, to just push, push further the point, um, that that location is unique in um, the way that it tucks the array away from the view of the neighborhood. Um. Would there be any um, scalable recommendation at all for how far you would want that relief to be minimized?
It's not up to us to tell you what you're asking for.
Okay.
But, but the answer to my other questions may help.
Okay, so um, I remember, I don't remember all of them, so if you remember.
So you, you, you put up an existing solar array, what was its intention, and why is, why are you now saying that you need a solar array that's twice the size? So what was the original use of this, of the existing solar array?
The original solar array is a five thousand watt system. And it covers, and it, and it doesn't cover all of our electric usage, but it covers a certain percentage. Um, and I was planning to as, as time passed, and it's been a long time, because that was twenty eleven. Um, add to that, and looking at, looking back now, I wish I had done the whole thing back then, but um, adding to it will save us money.
It'll bring up the, um, the total offset of the system to, to cover the electrical consumption. So that system is still effective, I believe, Kevin. Um, but it has aged and it was not initially sized for um, the total consumption of the property. So, so this array is um, again, much more to, to a, a booster, to, to get the, the rest of the consumption accounted for.
Additionally, there would be paperwork uh, with the existing solar array in the town of East Fishkill. Uh, that may have all the survey dimensions, because I'm pretty sure there were permits were issued uh, way back uh, in twenty eleven or twenty ten. Um, and so you would, you may have a additional information in the downtown records that you can pick up stuff, why it was placed up there and you got a variance, and there may be some arguments that the applicant may have raised uh, at that time when this uh, uh, the existing solar array was placed at that location.
So it might not, it might not have needed a variance back then. These, um, but, so the, the, is the existing, the, because the use, I was told that the solar panels had essentially a useful life of about twenty years. So if you are, this was two thousand eleven, you're already eleven years in.
It's usually twenty-five, but, and, but at twenty-five is what they, the industry says, but typically it's longer. Um, basically what happens is every year a solar panel degrades a little bit. And so right now they're at like point, whatever, three percent or less than that, point three percent, I think it is, or something like that. So degrading, so you can actually have a solar panel for longer. It just, at, at twenty-five years, it will produce at minimum tw- eighty percent of what the production was when it was new. So these panels will, will last, could last longer than me. Um, but they just won't necessarily be as powerful.
Okay, you, you didn't quite let me finish. So my understanding was that solar panels lose about a one and a half percent of their use, useful life each year, okay? So yeah, in twenty years, that would tell me that your panels are about seventy cent, seventy percent as effective as they were when you originally installed them. So they're still useful, but they're not producing um, as much electric as they were previously or storing it, okay? Um, so the, so my question goes to, is the, are the new panels being sized to re, actually eliminate those panels in nine years, or is that, are they sized because this is the, the amount of electric consumption that your house needs?
They're sized as a, as a complement to them to cover the rest of the existing demand with an additional um, permitted um, exception for the growth of future consumption as well. So it's.
So you're making them larger than they need to be?
No, we're not making them larger than they need to be. We're making them within the recommendations of NYSERDA.
And just, we, and we consume approximately sixteen thousand kilowatts in a year. The two systems together is less than that. It's, it's uh, approximately fifteen thousand. So I'm, so it does, it's not going to cover a hundred percent, so to shrink it down more would cover less. And, and I mean, we do this because we, we really love East Fishkill. We want to, we want to, and in our retirement and as we get older, we don't want our costs to keep rising. And everyone wants, everyone worry about, you know, all these different costs as you get older. This is one way that we can make sure that our costs, our energy costs are actually are lower. And so, for example, this next year, this system would call, save us twenty-six hundred and fifty dollars. And then that continues, and that continues, that continues. The system we have right now saves us about fourteen hundred dollars. So it is a financial um thing that we're trying to do. As taxes rise, as everything else rises, we want to get a hold of our, our costs and make sure that, that, that we don't get cost, you know, out, out, out of having to move out, because.
So I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you with, with that at all. What I'm trying to get at is this board's responsibility is to minimize variances that are being asked for, and we also have to be careful that if we allow yours, then the next person who doesn't want to put their solar panels in the middle of their yard is going to come in and say, but you let Mr. Keegan put it only thirty-five feet away from his neighbor. I want to do what Mr. Keegan did. That's why, and that's why this board needs to understand what's either unique about your property, or, you know, again, if your solar fields are in the middle and that's why you can't put in the middle, that, sorry, if your septic fields are in it, then, then that's a perfectly reasonable reason, okay?
I understand.
This board needs to hang its hat on something, because otherwise we're just obviating the, the town code. We're then, we're then, in essence, everybody's just going to come in and say, well, we don't need to meet the hundred feet, because Mr. Keegan didn't need, need to meet it.
Right. I understand that, and I understand that that, you, you are trying to protect the rules that have been set up, and I, and I appreciate that. I think that's a, um, that is an important thing, but yes, we will get the septic fields, because the septic fields, like I said, are right on that platform. Actually, you can't see it on the survey, but there's a, there's a, 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 a plateau in the backyard, and then it goes down on the sides and to the back. Um, when, when we had our house built, we had that, and that's where the septic fields are, is right at that top. Right a hundred feet, and we'll, we'll, we'll put that on the survey, so you can see that.
Yeah, and you can, anything you can give us to show that this property has unique circumstances? I, I'm all for solar panels. I have them on my own house, so I totally get that. Um, but like, like I said, we have to protect ourselves from future applicants.
Absolutely. And I don't know if this, I don't know if this, this matters at all, but are the, the orientation of our roof is not, also because we got estimates for that too, it just is not um, ideal, not even really that functional. So why that was um, why the pole mounts are there is because it's on the north side facing south. There's no trees that are in the way, so it's, it gets optimum, you know, solar right there. So on that side of the property is the optimum solar.
Okay.
So, so when you, so when you do those uh, updated survey, make sure everything is there. And any of these things that cannot be shown on the survey, you can um, get some photographs and give it to the town, and then we can get the copies of those photographs. So this way, uh, sometimes, um, you know, somebody might do a side visit that might help, but otherwise photographs also help. Um, to figure out the topography or plateau that you mentioned, then we can say, okay, now here's another evidence that um, we have to take into consideration.
Okay, and then, I don't know, Matt, you remember the, where you were standing at the location, so you did see the the dip or the, and the plateau, do you remember that? And I can take photos too, but.
Um, so we'll wait for the survey then.
Okay, so.
Matt sees a lot of properties, so.
All right.
Please remember that, okay?
I don't want to, I was just asking, that's all. So, um, so I want to just make sure I have everything, so um, did you want me to get paperwork from the town for the original? Um, pole mount.
I, I think pre, in two thousand eleven clearly predated the
Okay.
Code. I'm not worried about that. It, it, it's there, it is what it is. It was probably, as we said before, it was probably meeting the accessory building.
Yes.
Okay.
And you want, do you want to know where the septic fields are?
We want, we want a better survey. We want one survey that shows everything on it. And so we need an explanation for all these coops, but again, if they're, if they all meet their setbacks, then I'm less concerned about that, you know, you know.
So, septic fields, you want to, you want, uh, you want to.
If you're going to use the argument, Mr. Keegan, that your septic fields are part of the reason that you're putting the solar array where it is going, then you need to show us that where those.
Absolutely, absolutely. Photos where, or you want to have the, the proposed panels on this survey?
Yes.
And, and measurements.
And I'm putting on the regular survey, not the uh, one from the solar company.
Okay.
Because that's listing more of everything.
And then, and then, so do I have to have the surveyor put this on the, this, or do I just? Okay, so, all right, Castle.
Yeah, you should be, you should be able to give the surveyor the information about the size and where it's proposed to be, and should be able to just put it on there.
Okay, perfect, because I'm not familiar. I don't. All the time.
Not a big deal at all.
We can work with them on that.
Okay.
Great, great.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
I will see you again, we'll see you again next month then.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, board.
All right, and last but not least, and I don't want to pronounce your name wrong, but item number seven, Appeal four zero four four, I'm going to say Sadiq Rivas. One ninety-nine Blue Hill Road, Hopple Junction is requesting a nine foot and eleven foot left sideline variance and a thirty and thirty-two foot right sideline variance for ground mounted solar panels pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. So I'm, I believe Stephanie is here for the Rivas family.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, so if you, this is first time we're seeing what you're proposing, so if you can take us through what you're showing, that would be helpful.
Sure, so we are presenting a uh, it's a total of thirty point two four KW. Uh, ground mounted solar array for residents. Um, it would be split into two separate arrays and tied to two separate residential meters. So it would, it would be serving the main residence, and I'm not sure if it's a apartment they have, but they do have two residential meters on their property. Um, and they have two separate utility bills for the property, so um, that's the. Um, that's the, the reason why we're splitting it, um.
Okay.
And.
I'm also gonna see, because we got an updated survey today or sometime this week, I guess. And, I mean, this is one where clearly while you have seven point four acres to work with, it is an extremely narrow lot.
Yes, exactly.
So like on one side, the numbers are upside down unfortunately for me, but. It looks like one side is sixty-nine feet and the other side is eighty-eight, so literally you don't. You know, and unless you put this, the panels like directly straight from front to back. You'd need a variance anywhere on the property that you put them, and you were proposing to put them smack in the middle of the backyard, so they're where they should be. So, I don't even think you need to explain yourselves any further, I mean, continue, can, can your neighbor see these? Or is there any screening going up to distract, you know, to, to block it from the neighbors?
We, we did provide some site photos showing some of the natural screening that already exists on the property. Including uh, street view photos. So on the north side of their property, which is where we're requesting the. Uh, you know, it's only uh, eleven and nine feet for the variance that we're requesting. Um, that north property line is very thickly screened. It's the south property line that is a little more questionable, because it's a mix of. Um. You know, evergreens and deciduous trees, so there's screen, you know, natural screening present. Um.
There, there is one tree directly in between that house and their property, when you're standing where the panels are supposed to go.
Right. So, oh, that's Courtney, she is my coworker and. And, um, you know, she, she's been on the property, so I wanted her on this meeting to kind of give some feedback. But there is an aerial view on the seventh page of the photos that we provided where. The, the property lines aren't depicted on here, but you can kind of see like what kind of vegetation is already existing here. Um, so I think the main concern would be for that property directly to the south. Of our customer's parcel.
Okay, and have you talked with that neighbor?
We have not, um, we wanted to meet with the board first since. You know, not only are we requesting an area variance for the setback requirements. But this property also falls in a flood zone, which is why we have them positioned so close to the main residence. Because the flood zone lines come up almost more than half of their parcel. If you look on page two of the plans that we provided, you can see where, how far up the flood zones come.
And it appears that the structure that's closest on that side that you're commenting about, that would have been more visible, it says stable, so it's. Doesn't even look like it's a house, it's.
Oh, yeah, so was not even sure, sometimes I know these, um, the imagery on the GIS maps isn't always up to date, so. Um.
I mean, it appears that.
I think, I think the house is on the far side of that lot.
Right, that's, that's, that's what it looks like.
And as Courtney said.
But based on the area, it appears that there's actually a clump of vegetation there between the house and, and that property.
Exactly, and you can kind of see that in the photos that we provided. Um, as best as we could without trespassing on somebody's property without permission.
But again, you have no other choice, so I'm willing to let this one go to public hearing and let's see what the neighbors say.
Oh, and again, the, the way, it's such a narrow lot, I mean, they will need the. Uh, variance regardless of whatever they put in the backyard, so.
Right, exactly.
Totally agree.
And we, we looked at the roof as an option for this, but they just don't have the space on the roof for the, the size. System that they would require and also be able to meet the state fire setbacks.
Yeah, it's gotta rather.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Izzy's. All right, on favor. All right, so folks, we will see you next month, if you, if you're, you have the opportunity to speak with the neighbors, neighbor, obviously, that would be helpful, but. Um, like I said, you're, you're putting them where they belong, so.
Oh, okay, great.
Argue with this one, that's.
So, just for clarification, do we need to post a sign before the public hearing? And is that something that you provide to us, or do we have to source that?
Yeah, you can come see me.
Okay, who's me, I'm sorry, okay.
Come into the office and see me.
Okay.
I'll come see you tomorrow morning.
How's, how soon before the public hearing does the sign need to be posted?
Twenty days.
Twenty days, okay, and what's the date of the public hearing?
I'll give all that information to you tomorrow.
The September meeting is September twenty-seventh, so you have to have it up by a week from Friday, a week, yeah, a week from this Friday.
A week from this Friday, okay.
Well, twenty days, that's would be twenty-five days, so yeah, you could, you have, you have till Labor Day, thereabouts.
The last question I have before I let everybody go, as far as the flood zone. Um, I know that we have on our plans, the arrays kind of right up next to it. Do you know if there's a specific buffer that we need to give, or is that red line?
That's, that's not this board's purview.
Okay, great, so we'll talk to planning when that time comes.
Yeah. I think, yeah.
Yeah, give Jackie a call, she'll get you your answer.
Excellent, thank you so much, I appreciate everything.
No problem, again, this, and you're putting them where they belong, so I, I'm, I'm not gonna argue with this one, so.
That's great, I, I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, um.
Motion to adjourn.
I knew you'd be ready.
So moved.
Wrong person to say that. Al, how about you, you want to second the motion?
I'll second the motion.
All right. On favor. All right, we'll see everybody likely in person in September, all right?
Thank you all.
Have a good night. Bye.